Moving on to number 13, affordable housing funding request for our H.A. for a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue. Also by Darren.
One down, two to go.
Yes.
I will be very brief, since we've spoken about this a few different times. This is a request from the Regional Housing Authority on a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue. The council on, back in February, awarded $400,000 as part of a loan for the New Haven Court Affordable Housing Project. In your meeting, May 21st, you discussed this at length about the request for additional funding, and you wanted to wait until after your hearing or your workshop on homelessness that occurred this past Friday. A couple of items. One, in my best Robin here, in your Low Mod Housing Asset Fund, you have $969,455.20. And additionally, you have $200,000 in your Homes-to-Family Capital Maintenance Account. So you have approximately 1.16 million in funding that could be used for this project and any other project related to providing housing for the homeless. Two quick items. Number one, these funds cannot be used for operational as relates to shelter, but they can be used for construction. And number two, in order for the grant applicant to receive a benefit for receiving funding from the local agency, it has to be in a loan. The city council can do this in two ways. You can grant the funds to the Regional Housing Authority, and then they would enter into a loan with the developer, or you could enter into a loan directly with the developer. I mention that because there was some discussion about, you know, are you truly ever going to see any revenue back as a result of the funding that's being provided? And the answer is likely not. But however, that's how it needs to be structured in order for them to receive credit for their 9% tax credit application to the state. At this time, I'd like, if you want, we can have Gus from the Regional Housing Authority come up and answer any questions, or the council can have a discussion. I do know that we have a number of members in the audience that are here to speak, and I do believe that the interim C.I.L. from Sutter County would like to speak on this item also.
He is here. Any comment or questions from council?
[inaudible]
What? You want to hear questions first?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we have three speaker cards. Since you're up there, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Steve Smith, interim county administrator, Sutter County. Just wanted to give you a brief update. There will be a staff report on next week's agenda for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to consider with staff recommendation to approve an additional $200,000 from the county's CDBG funds towards this project. So that's all I had to say. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Rick Jemerson again. Are you Ms. Butcher? Where? Oh, right there. Okay.
Again, Mayor, council members, I thank you for the opportunity. And again, my apologies, as I expressed them in the past, that I was unable to be in town during last week's meeting, but I've tried to meet with as many people as possible, gathers much information. I'm definitely, and for those of you who don't know, I was homeless for over 14 months. I've lived on the street. I ate off the streets, so don't take this in the wrong context. I'm just simply would like clarity, and I'm sure it may have been covered at the last meeting, but I know this was a, they'd been turned down one time, they're coming back, they need more money. I understand what's going on here. But I've been concerned, and I hear this continually in the conversations I have out in the community, of people asking me, how is it that a 40-unit facility is costing $29,000-something dollars per unit? I think the biggest concern at this point in the community, from the people that I'm familiar with, is just simply, what is it that's costing so much within this building that's coming together somewhere? And I'm not expecting you to give me an answer just right off your hair. I know that if I'd have been able to dig deeper someplace or knew where to dig, I would have found out. So it's kind of late to the table, but I'm just letting you know what the concern is from the community, what the actual cost is for this type of facility. Okay? Nothing more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kimberly Butcher.
Hello, Mayor Harris and the council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Kimberly Butcher, and I'm a Yuba County resident. And I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Yuba County and Sutter County children who are not necessarily able to advocate on their own behalf. But I also want to make one little comment regarding the $29,000 per unit, which sounds quite affordable compared to the cost of an RV. So I just want to say, I don't know exactly how much, the particulars of the cost of the units. I know constructions are very expensive. I've done some, been part of many projects, but I do know that it doesn't sound that astronomical. For the past eight years, I previously served as the Director of the Child Development Programs for Yuba City Unified School District. These programs serve over 650, 50, 18-months-of-five-year-old children. Over the years, the programs have enrolled homeless children, meeting their developmental and nutritional needs by day, and sending them back to their cars or the river bottoms at night. It's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that our only assistance to secure housing for these families is to get them added to the waiting list for affordable housing, because there is not enough. More affordable housing units is what will remedy the needs of these families and get our children off the streets. Daily from my office in the heart of the Richland Housing Units, I could clearly see that every unit stays full. Nearly all the homeless children we enrolled would at some point not be able to attend our child development programs due to the hardships of homelessness. Typically, these families would leave the area to live with family elsewhere, because they were not able to secure housing here. I urge the City of Yuba City to do everything in their power to assist in the addition of 40 affordable housing units through the Regional Housing Authority's efforts. The Regional Housing Authority has a proven track record of continually improving and increasing affordable housing in our counties. Your investment will pay dividends, and many children are likely to benefit. Your commitment will increase the Regional Housing Authority's ability to leverage federal dollars and state dollars. Please consider meeting their monetary requests and consider increasing your contribution. I'm confident that the Regional Housing Authority's 40-unit project will be successful, given the dollars necessary, and the city won't have to plan, organize, or execute the project. But clearly, the city can say that they've supported and gave all the money they had earmarked for housing at the city level to support the additional, addition of affordable housing in Yuba City. Having learned tonight that the funds for consideration are not part of the general fund, but are actually earmarked for such projects, is very encouraging to me, and I'm very hopeful that Yuba and Sutter County kids will benefit from these projects. I do want to note that recently, there was a city of Huntington Beach that actually was sued for not taking action and providing affordable housing in their city. And more closely, Wheatland was recently criticized for not addressing affordable housing needs. So I encourage you to take this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Butcher. And, is it Morgan?
Through the mayor.
Let's get this done. We'll come back.
Actually, I have a point of clarification.
About 325?
Yeah, it's $325,000 per unit, not 29,000, just to be clear.
Rick, you okay? You don't have a heart problem, do you?
I was on the train, bro.
Yeah. If it was that much, we'd be loving it. Okay, Morgan, welcome.
Thank you. So through the mayor, I was gonna see if you would indulge me, and I presented, like, I have some little slides that I prepared, just with some statistical information, just to kind of look at as I'm kind of going over some of this.
Those dots right there, those lights.
Actually, we don't really like to do this, because we don't like through the light.
Oh, no. If you don't want to, it's totally okay. I can just shoot from the hip.
You're good. We want to hear from you.
So I want to first say, I applaud all of your efforts to really become well-informed and educated on the topic of homelessness and the current need in the area. Something that a lot of us as partners in the homeless service delivery network of care have been really working on for many years, and so it's exciting to see everyone coming to the table in partnership on this. So one of the things I think that, you know, when considering the need for housing, and of course, this is something we talked about at the workshop, that there are only 40 units of available rental inventory, and I even double-checked that yesterday in Sutter County alone. So it's only 40 units. So this project stands to double that. And while it's not an immediate answer, it's not going to put 40 units of available housing into our community tomorrow, it is one of the only projects that are approved at the planning commission level to actually move forward. And, you know, we don't really have anything else in the pipeline. Can I have you move to the... Okay. So the average annual cost absorbed by jurisdictions, I'm a data and research Nazi, like, so I actually researched some journals with supporting information, and some very recent studies that are published by authorities that research for HUD estimated that the national average cost to local jurisdictions as it relates to law enforcement, calls for service, fire, days in jail, emergency services related to ambulance care, emergency room visits, you can see, on and on, $35,578 per person annually of an unsheltered homeless individual. Permanent supportive housing is a new trend that's been included into the continuum of care using a housing-first model, and it's been very successful. Well, now they have actual conclusive research supporting permanent supportive housing. And HUD is not only asking jurisdictions and basically mandating that we include permanent supportive housing into our continuum of care if we want to be competitive for grant funding, but the reason why is because they have actually been able to demonstrate a 35% overall nationwide reduction in chronic homelessness for entities that have included permanent supportive housing into their service delivery model. So I think those numbers really speak volumes as to the need and the actual success of permanent supportive housing. So the total cost to operate permanent supportive housing per person annually is estimated at $12,800. So when I take the numbers from the current pit count for Sutter County, which were 466 respectively for 2019, and I multiply that by 35,578, I get $16,579,348 that we are actually spending on homeless individuals as they impact our systems for fire personnel, law enforcement, vandalism, I mean, on and on and on. So those are costs, hidden costs, that we're actually spending already. So I know that, I mean, all of us, I think, cringe at the fact that, you know, these units are costing about $300,000 per unit. However, the long-term dividends related to this project are just extraordinary. I mean, when you factor in $16 million that Sutter County alone hypothetically is spending as it pertains to each unsheltered homeless individual.
All right, that's very good. You got your time, plus one minute.
Absolutely.
But I want you to know that your message has been received.
So I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And then, in addition, I had just counted all of the inquiries I have for housing to Habitat for Humanity, because we've had an increased number.
Thank you very much. Gus, did you want to speak? All right, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You have heard all this information before, but for the benefit of the public, we definitely want to put some information out there in terms of project costs. Yes, it is a 40-unit apartment complex that costing approximately $13 million. Some factors that lead to that are the mandated requirement by all the funding sources to pay prevailing wages. We estimate that about 26% is the premium that we're paying on this project for labor because of prevailing wages. That's roughly $2 million right there, off the top. For the benefit of the public, all the development impact fees, water connection fees, sewer connection fees payable to the city and the county, flood control fees, that's 1.1 million dollars of the 13 million. In addition to that, and this is maybe some information, my fault that I've never given to the council, is our funding sources require that we capitalize $781,000 off the get-go, so cash on hand from the 13 million that sits in a bank account for any operating reserve needs or any capital reserve needs for the future. So that's, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars right there, that, out of the 13 that sits in the, in a bank account for future capital or operating needs. And then additionally, that, the land cost that was appraised at $560,000, that's included in the 13 million. So even though the Housing Authority is leveraging that amount, it's not a true cost, because we're just leveraging that amount of it. But in our funding applications, we have to include it as a cost, and so that 560 is part of the total $13 million. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public care to comment? All right, let me bring him back. Discussion, action, comments?
Through the mayor. Sir, as I've stated before for this project, totally support the need for affordable housing in our community, and as I've stated previously, I'm also supportive of the need for temporary housing. With that being said, I would like to revisit, at least discuss amongst us up here, my previous recommendation of an amount of $800,000, 600 coming from the Low Mod Housing Asset Fund, and 200,000 coming from the Home-to-Families Capital and Maintenance Account. This does leave us some fund balance for what may come to us as temporary housing. I know at the homeless workshop, we heard from the county some interest from their governing board about something that may occur that could benefit the city as well. I had the opportunity yesterday to visit with Habitat for Humanity and the Life Center, attend the homeless workshop. I think that no matter what we do, we still have a large mountain to climb in regards to having enough units within our community to house those folks who need it. This would be a good project if it's successful. My understanding is there's, this is a very competitive process, and even if we fully funded it, our chances of it being approved are, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's a very competitive process, and we are up against other metros that are competing for these funds. Anyway, I'll wait for the motion. I just wanted to revisit the one I had made previously.
Sir?
I was gonna second his motion if he's gonna do it.
All right, do you have any comment first?
Oh, I have no comments.
Turn the light on. I'm kidding.
It's been a long day, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're good. You're good. Whatever you need.
No, I want to reiterate what Councilmember Boomgarden said. This is a much-needed project here. There's been the perception through the newspaper and through different contacts we have that the city is against this. The city's just being very prudent with the funds that we're entrusted with. And, you know, we have, obviously, from the workshop on Friday, we have a huge, huge problem. And it was led to believe quite a while ago, when the homeless shelter was first presented, that this was going to be the wherewithal to solve everything, and we found out Friday, it's not. It's not really going to solve the problem. With that, Gus, can you come back up to the podium, please, sir? I've had the pleasure of sitting down with you, and we've talked about this project. And I appreciate the stats, I appreciate the numbers that you brought. And even though you're not having to put out the cash for the land, it's still part of the cost.
Correct.
You can't take it back and leave the building there.
Agreed.
Okay. What happens if you go in in July and we don't make this process?
We'll try again in the next round of tax credit applications in March of 2020.
And what happens if we don't get approved in March?
We'll try again in round two of next year.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to a question I asked you setting in my office, sir. What's Plan B?
Plan B is attempt to look for other funding sources to help leverage and bring in the tax credit financing that we need. You know, we're hearing, you know, on the news, you hear it regularly, Governor Newsom is trying to attack this problem with potentially more funding, and so we would attempt to apply for all these other new funding sources that the state of California is looking to put out there.
Okay, thank you. To let you know where I struggle with this issue, as you just heard, we could be sitting here a year from today and still not have a project, but still have a need and a much bigger need. And I really struggle with that, because we've got to start figuring out solutions. And a solution is not hanging our hat on one dream and one project. Our solution is to attack this on multiple fronts. At the workshop, Supervisor Whitaker threw out the idea of converting possibly the old courthouse. It's an existing building that we could probably renovate for a whole lot less than $13 million. The county already owns the building, you know? Personally, myself, I see much more immediate results in building more 14-forward projects, giving money to Habitat for Humanity, finally giving Casa de Esperanza a new home. That's a major burr in my craw. That helps women and children. And that's where I have the problem of, we've got just a little over $1 million, more money coming in down the line at some point in the next year, but to tie up literally 100% of our assets on a dream and get nowhere, I really struggle with that. And so while I may seem like I'm harsh sometimes, I see the problem as it being immediate and real. That was made very evidently clear last Friday. It is a problem that we can't keep putting Band-Aids on, and we have to start asking the question to everyone involved, what does a real solution look like? What does real success look like? The mayor summed it up very well when he and I have had conversations about this, and if I may share briefly, Mayor, I've already gone on record, so might as well, right?
Depends on what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
You know, talking about success is when you can go down to the river and fish, and there's not homeless camps down there. When we can go shopping, and there's not people resting on doorways. When our children are coming to school, and administration doesn't realize that, you know, hey, 10% of our population is homeless. I have a heart of compassion for these guys. They need to be helped. And where I really struggle is hanging all of our money in a project that may never get off the ground. I've done my own research, talked to people that are in this industry, $325,000 a unit is absurd. And I realize a lot of that was caused by, right here at our city, was some engineering that we did. So we'll own it. At the same time, I've asked multiple times, can we soft-engineer this? We've talked about cutting the cottage cheese off this, doing different things, and gosh, you've sat in my office, and it's like, no, we're way beyond it. And yet, if we come back with the project, we're not looking at reengineering it. The solution is, hey, we just get more money from the municipalities or get more grants. My opinion is we got to start dealing with real solutions to this. My personal opinion, and this is me speaking, is I'm willing to give one more chance. But that's it. At the end of the day, when we go through this round, I'm comfortable with my fellow councilmember's number. If it doesn't make it, we're bringing all that money home, because we can work with the county, we can work with R.H.A. if you guys are willing to entertain something other than where you're at to find a different location, to find permanent real solutions that we're not sitting here for two to three years to go through a grant process, a tax credit process, and construction. We need answers today. We actually needed answers a few years ago. There are opportunities, and it was made very clear on Friday, you got to be all in, you got to do it. To me, being all in and throwing money into the project that if it doesn't pass in July, we come back around in March, that's not all in. That's holding on to a dream that may never come to fruition. I'm willing to extend it and give them one more shot, Mr. Mayor, but if it doesn't fly, that commitment ends right there, as far as I'm concerned. I would much rather give it to your two organizations, work with the county, let's build some more 14-forwards, let's get with Habitat Humanity, let's get Casa de Esperanza a permanent home, bigger than what they had before. Let's start helping the women and children of this city that are homeless, that are battered, that are in need, and let's start fixing the problem now versus waiting two to three years for these freaking grants and tax credits to come through. I'm not a hard-nose, I'm just a realist. My wife cares very much about this. She goes out, and she has bought coats for the homeless during the winter. Just as Rick talked earlier, we've dealt with this in my own personal family with homelessness, with mental illness. It's not like I don't realize what's going on. Trust me, I get it more than any of you would probably really know. I've been standing there when the courts tell someone, I'm getting you out of jail, and you can go sleep under a tree. That's not doing anybody a bit of good. I'm tired of talking, I'm tired of dreaming. I'm willing to extend one more, but, Mr. Mayor, if they can't do it, I'm willing to work with the county and these other organizations to start addressing the needs.
Thank you very much. How did I know? Good job.
You're like this. You do that well, Mayor, thank you.
Happy to hear from you.
You know, I, thanks, Councilman Shaw, for the insights of your thoughts and some personal sharing. That was helpful. And knowing that I was sharing earlier today that, and I don't remember the year, but I'm just gonna say that sometime 1997. Years ago, we started this conversation with a mayor back then, John Miller, that they, there was a proclamation done back then that we asked from the city to help us with homelessness, back in 1997. And I have that proclamation in my home. I kind of ran into it again. It was a moment to say, the city has been in this journey for a long time. I mean, a commitment, a long commitment. And knowing what Regional Housing Authority does for thousands of community members that live in multiple regions of our areas, how many people do you house? Gus, can you give us that number?
Approximately 10,000 individuals.
So with, and you're correct, Councilman Shaw, this is, it's a long shot. It is a long shot. I'm used to long shots, as you can tell, because we started in 1997 and even further before that, and haven't given up at this point. So for us to, for the city, you know, to contribute this money, that we haven't, truthfully, I believe, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong on this, we haven't really done a whole lot for affordable housing or, you know, in that area for a long, long time. And this, the reason we have this money is because we've done well in saving it, and it's specifically for purposes like this. And I think that giving them a fair opportunity for, you know, work... And I, I think that giving them a fair opportunity for, you know, working towards these tax credits, because when I met with Gus early on, the, the whole tax credit process was very confusing, how, how the applicant works towards competing with other larger jurisdictions. And I have to say, I think, thank you, Gus, and your team and the Housing Authority Board for working steadily and consistently towards affordable housing. If you have housed over 10,000 people, and now we're looking at 40 additional units that are costly, I will say it, it's quite expensive, but it's also for individuals with mental health and other disabilities, with families and children. I believe in those kinds of long shots because I've seen it work, I've seen it come around. It doesn't happen always in our own timeframe, and I appreciate you giving them a timeframe. But I think it's a decision for all of us to make together instead of just, you know, one particular decision on that area. I, I really think that we're right in that cuff and that tipping over with now Sutter County really working towards the temporary shelter and having that hopefully launch in September. I applaud that for Sutter County Board of Supervisors working hard on that and, and Yuba County doing all the work that they've done. But I would like to, if there's no other comment, I can motion a mayor or would you like for next to be said?
Comment.
Okay, so I appreciate your, thank you for giving me the time. But I would say, let's keep working forward on this and have, hopefully, something that we can all agree that we all built it together, not just one. Thank you.
Mr. Becerra, thank you. I know, had the opportunity to meet with you and I did, and Ms. Flores as well, to discuss RHA's mission, et cetera. Could you just, again, refresh my memory? Because I know that you guys do take a look at existing structures for rehab. If, if this plan doesn't happen this time, or this application is non-funded, there, it would appear to me that there are some opportunities, without getting into specifics to alert those who may own that property.
Certainly.
But there are some of those opportunities out there. I, I would like to think that you guys are, are taking a look at those as well.
Definitely, Councilmember, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for, for coming back.
That was gonna be my question as well. Yeah. It's definitely important to have your Plan BCD because, you know, we have 40 units, that's 80-ish people, particularly when the, there's gonna be some children in there. And I really find value in that. How do you put a price on that? And so, it's a start. The approach to the homeless issue is multi-pronged, multifaceted, multileveled. This is one of those. So is 14 forward, so is a homeless shelter, so is, in my opinion, we have a need of a tent city, if you will. And the multiple vacancies, it might fall into the potential development for something similar. I would like to see, hopefully, we can save some money if this, if it does get approved, we can save some money by toning down some of the extras on the project. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes. Oh.
Through the, through the mayor?
Yep.
You're okay with this?
I'm, okay.
Go ahead.
You moved my screen.
Sorry.
Through the mayor, I would like to, I'm not sure if it's a motion, so I'm gonna go to the city attorney. It's more of a recommendation, Shannon?
I think it's a motion.
It's a motion.
You can do a recommendation, you can do a motion. What would you like to accomplish?
Well, I wanna, I simply wanna give them $800,000. I'd like to give them $800,000, 600,000 of it coming from the low mod, low mod, low mod housing asset fund, and 200,000 from the Home to Families Capital and Maintenance Account.
That's, that's a motion right there.
Okay. And I would like to thank Councilman Boomgarden for this great time to say, I'd like to second We've been waiting a long time for this.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve funding for $800,000 as described. Do we have all those in favor?
Nope, through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the motion to be time certain to where if the project does not get awarded in the next cycle, that the funds become back available for us to reallocate to other projects.
Now, is that automatic anyway?
No, not apparently, because they got turned down in March and they are, I think they're currently still on the.
I mean, if this 800,000, we allocate for that, they don't get the, they don't get it? We still can do whatever we want.
Right.
Is that, that is not correct.
Where are we gonna, where are we gonna put it? If we're, if it's not going to the project?
You can, you can, the motion can specify that that $800,000 is to be used through a certain funding period, and if it's not granted as of the March or whatever date that it is, that the item could come back to the city council for further action.
But we, if, but if it does not, are we still tied to spending that 800,000?
We're still, if, if it, under the current motion, if it's, if they do not get approved for the project, they can press forward in March, we're still on the hook for the 800, they can go to next July, we're still on. They knew the last project within 30 days, so we'll give them till the end of August. That should be plenty of time for the award process.
We're on the hook forever as long as once we allocate it.
Conceivably.
Doesn't start over every time.
You've author, if approved, you have authorized it basically until you no longer authorize it. But my suggestion is, is if you want a cap or window, specify what that cap or window is, so that there's a clear time period.
Send it. I need to rescind the motion.
If it's okay with Councilmember Cardozo, you could actually amend your motion to be consistent with Councilmember Shaw's suggestion.
I believe we still need to provide direction to Mr. Gale and to the city as to whether, who the loan is made to.
Yes, and that would be a component as well. So that could be either made directly from the city or to the RHA.
And I, so that's why I wanted to rescind it, because I do have a question on, on that particular matter.
Okay, yes, you can withdraw.
Mr. Gale? Sorry? So could you just run us through the options again in regards to how to allocate these loan funds?
Absolutely. So the city and council can do it in one of two ways. Either you can grant the money directly to the Regional Housing Authority, or you can direct us to enter into a loan with the developer. Either way, if you, I just want to make sure that's clear and full transparent. If you grant the funds to the Regional Housing Authority, they will now then enter into a loan agreement with the developer, and then they would receive any, any future revenue off of that loan. So, those are the two ways, grant it directly to the Regional Housing Authority or enter into a loan with the, with the developer.
Yes. Through the council member?
Through the mayor.
Question, Darren. If we go to, if we get the 800,000 to RHA, the, it doesn't go through, the project does not go through, RHA just keeps it?
No, so.
Or are on the hook for it anyway?
So if you were to dedicate the funds to the Regional Housing Authority, they would then, if they were successful with the project, they would enter into an agreement, a loan with the developer for that project.
All right.
And, and if you want to put a timetable to it, although there's an application period in July, I would say make sure that you push this out till at least September when there's actually notification of if funding's received or not for the project.
Good idea. Okay, so now we're starting fresh? We have a motion?
No, I think.
Or not?
No, you rescinded.
You rescinded it, so we have to start.
Rescinded.
I did, but I think the city attorney had something to say.
Yes, and I, I just wanted to have some clarification, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. If the city is granting the funds to the RDA or RHA, and I want to confirm with Mr. Gale that this is the case, we can grant it contingent upon the approval of the award so that it comes back to the city in case it's not awarded. Or the city can just do it directly and control the funds.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
That's, that helps a lot. Thank you. All right.
Do you like a motion now?
Yeah, can you make it for me?
Would you like it to go to the RHA or would you like the city to do the loan?
RHA.
RHA.
Part of the whole motion?
Yeah.
So, what, what it could be, Councilmember Boomgarden?
I, I've, I've got it, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city be authorized to enter into the deferred loan with RHA for up to $800,000. And that is contingent upon the New Haven project being awarded. And I guess that's the only mechanism, with a drop dead date of September 30.
And through the mayor? And just Councilmember Shaw, would that loan be a grant of funds to the RHA consistent with the intent and purposes of using it for the New Haven project? And the reason why I'm asking is we're not loaning the money to the RHA per se, we would be granting them contingent upon them loaning it to the, loaning it to New Haven.
What you just said, 800,000 RHA, September 30 deadline.
Fantastic, thank you.
Can we, can we amend that to say upon granted? If it's granted, it doesn't go anywhere. And if it's, if that's, you don't have to put a date.
What?
If it's granted, it comes, goes to them. And if it's not granted, it comes back. It's clear.
You mean if the project wins?
Correct, if it's awarded or not awarded.
I believe.
I don't think you need to put a September 30th date on it. September 30th, 19, that's what.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
You do, because with the motion, if you say it, you know, if it's granted, then they can go back in March, they can go back next July, it's out there as long as they're petitioning, so that's why there's a date.
Forever.
Well, I, I just heard our city attorney say something similar to what I just said.
No.
Through the mayor, just so I can clarify, Councilmember Escondola, I'm sorry, I might have been misspoken. I actually suggest having a concrete date in place. What it would be doing, it'd be granting it to the RHA contingent upon the award by a concrete date. So September 30th would go in. But if, if it wasn't awarded, it would come back to the city council for consideration. If it was awarded, it would automatically go forward with the project and the city council would have no further involvement.
Okay, so then, okay, that's clear. Thank you for muddying it earlier, but making it clear now. Gus, when, when do you project that the notification would happen?
The state usually announces, announces awards for round two, late September, early October, it's typical.
That's what I was thinking. So I was hoping maybe Councilman Shaw would go towards more of October 30th instead of a September, in case there's a delay. I can make a friendly amendment, I'm told, to October 31st, maybe Halloween, 2019?
Same thing.
Would you accept that, Councilman Shaw?
I've got conflicting information over here because Mr. Gale said typically it's September, Gus is saying September, October. Our city attorney, do you know when these are actually? No, he has no.
I can, I can check the calendar for the Tax Credit Allocation Committee to give you a date certain.
Why don't we just go the first of the year?
It's published on their website.
October 31st, I'll accept it.
God, so that, do we go with a second now?
Or do you want to go?
I just did that, second.
You want comments now?
Comments afterward on the motions.
Yeah, but I mean, but you can speak before we do the final, correct?
So we have a motion to approve it, $800,000 to RHA contingent upon winning, or whatever the term is. If they do not, it goes back to the city?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That needs to occur by October 31st of this year?
Yes. And if. You can either vote now or you can allow additional comments if you prefer.
Okay, so that's our motion. Does any, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Go ahead.
All right. This is a very difficult process. There is lots of folks trying to get money for affordable housing. And one time shot just doesn't get it. So, I mean, they have to have more than just one chance, I, because there's tons of people trying for this. And we're trying to put our best foot, our best foot forward between July 1st of this year through December 31st of this year, we're gonna get approximately $250,000 from, I believe it's the AB fund? SB, thank you, not AB, SB, I'm sorry, SB fund. And when we finish up Bridge Street in 2020, we're gonna be getting between 600 to 800,000. So that's another million dollars in this account. So I, I would like to make an amendment, because we have a first and a second on the motion, and I would like to put a timeline of December 30th, or, well, that'd be a year, that's not, that's not good enough either. I'd like to put July, excuse me, September of 2021, give them three chances. Because we're gonna have another million dollars put in that fund. It's not like it's gonna be empty. We can still help 14 Forward, we can still help Sutter County, it's not like, it's, it's not like it's done. It's, it's a tough process and they're gonna go out and try getting money from the state to add to their collection. Everybody else is added. And I would like to, to make, to amend the motion till 2021. Give them a chance, give them three chances. I mean, because it's tough, it's very difficult. We've been dealing with this for how many years, Gus? Five years, four years we've been working on this, sir?
Approximately.
Yeah, we've been dealing, and this is, this is very difficult. And, you know, one time shot, that's it, then we're back to nowhere, and now we're back to people, veterans, children, living back out there. And like with the presentation we had before, $16 million a year, when it'd be, when it could be cut, to helping homeless from the county?
It's my understanding that if the project is not approved by the deadline, the money comes back to us to be used at our option, but that doesn't mean that ship has left the building and they can no longer apply or come back here for more money. They're not dead in the water come October 30th.
But they'll have to come back and ask for more. They have to come back and ask again, come back and ask again.
They will anyway.
Huh? I know they will, but it's, if it's sitting there, they could just reapply.
So you, you do understand that if it goes beyond October 31st, they can, they can still get the money, they just gotta come back and go through the process again?
Correct.
You do, but you, your motion stands?
No.
Or your amendment, your amendment, requested amendment stands?
Yes.
Does anybody want to second that requested amendment? No one does, so we'll go with the first, unless you had a comment, sir?
You, you covered it for me.
I did, okay. So, will you do me the favor and, we have the motion on the table, we just need the second?
I already seconded it.
And we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No, okay, so motion carries, thank you very much, 800,000.